No, thank you very much. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem. No, thank you very. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem. No, thank you very. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem. No, thank you very. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem. No, thank you very. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem. No, thank you very. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem. Thank you very much for fixing. I think it's still a problem.
Through your worship? Can you try speaking?
Test, test.
It is? Okay.
Well, thank you very much. It looks like I may have been the culprit. My electronic equipment. So thank you everybody for help to the viewers at home. I apologize about the inconvenience, but we'll move right into our council. Meeting, but before we do, Counselor Harrison McIntyre, did you have an award recognition?
Um, I just wanted to thank Counselor Jeb for putting on a, for her contribution to the fantastic event that I went to yesterday with some of the other councils. The fundraiser for the WLI Institute and for the Gibson Center. It was a Queen's Platinum Jubilee, and you may have already talked about this, but I didn't hear it. So it was a fantastic event, and I think I ate way too much. But it's because all the food was so delicious. So thank you all the volunteers who put it together. And I hope you raised a lot of money.
No, it's worth talking about twice. I've heard lots of positive comments about it. Is there any other awards or recognitions for members of council? Counselor Sainsbury?
I would just like to thank staff and the people who put together the Rodeo on Thursday out at the Public Works Building. And we had a good time and it was interesting to see the snowplows and the blades and the big trucks and backing into gates and rails and whatever without hitting them and the cones and. Counselor Jeb wrote aside and can now run a sidewalk machine. So if Director Horn is short of help, he'll know who to call. And, and it was a good day.
Oh, thanks, Counselor Sainsbury. I just heard backing into things. So I was kind of like, yeah. No, that's great. So we'll move along then. The confirmation of agenda. I'd look to the clerk, please, to identify any items to add or delete to the agenda.
Uh, thank you, your worship. If we can just go back to page three and we'll get a mover and seconder to confirm the agenda and then ask for disclosures of pecuniary interest.
Thank you very much. So the confirmation of the agenda, could I have it moved by Counselor Sainsbury, seconded by Counselor Noe? And all items on the agenda be approved for discussion tonight? And then we're going to move on to disclosures of pecuniary interest. One second. Yeah, thank you. So be resolved the agenda for the council meeting held on May thirty two zero two two be confirmed to circulated. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Madam Clerk, I have a disclosure. So at that time, I will hand it over to you so you could follow the procedures of council, if that's okay? And my disclosure would be at. Item R five, please. As I own a building that's listed in that report. Thank you very much. Will this be appropriate time for you to identify any items, Madam Clerk?
Um, yes, your worship. If members of council could, um, by, by show of request to speak, address any pecuniary interests that they may have.
Thank you, any counselor.
Uh, thank you, Deputy.
Come on there, sorry.
For CW five four, uh, the community grants, uh, specifically in relation to Tottenham Music in the Park and Allison Potato Festival. Thank you.
I'm just going to go along the line here then. Counselor Foster?
I thank you, Deputy Mayor Norcross. Item CS three. Have a pecuniary interest. I'm an adjacent property owner that was, uh, it was notified about this, this issue. So I'll declare. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lacy.
Thank you, worship. Um, CW five for the community grant requests, specifically Crick. I'm a committee member.
Thank you, Counselor Jeb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, again, CW five four and the grants and donations, uh, so simple for each. I volunteer with them.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other disclosures of pecuniary interest. So the adoption of council minutes. Be resolved at the minutes of the council meeting dated May ninth, two zero two two be adopted as circulated. Can I have a mover or a seconder? Counselor McCollin? Counselor Noe, all those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to termination of items requiring separate discussion. I now look to the clerk. To identify items for separate discussion and the reason they're out, please.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, D dash one, James Stevenson, H B N G Holburn Group, Rivers Edge Phase Four Water Allocation. There's a deputation. Um, R dash five additional information memorandum to item CW two one, Committee of the Hall of May ninth, twenty twenty two Heritage Advisory. Committee summary report recommendation number one, there's a disclosure, disclosure of pecuniary interest. Uh, CW five for twenty twenty two Community Grant Program Request. There were several pecuniary interests declared. Uh, CS one verbal report of the C O re calling with the Alston Pipeline and Supply of Water Update. Uh, we do require some direction from council. And lastly, uh, CS three, uh, council direction on Committee of Adjustment Appeals. War Fletcher Street, Alston and six two, three, three, fourteenth line new to come. So staff require direction. And there was also a pecuniary interest declared. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much. I'll look to council now to identify items for separate discussion. Counselor Jeb?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. CW one two, the request for town owned and operated greenhouses.
Thank you, Counselor Jeb. Counselor Sainsbury?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. CS three was pulled for pecuniary interest, but I would like to speak to it and I assume it's in camera. I just want a clarification.
Correct. We will pull that item and we'll take it in camera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foster?
I thank you. R two and R five, please.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. Any other members of council? I'm not seeing any. So I'd look to the clerk now to summarize all items identified for separate discussion, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I've just been informed that our, our deputation will no longer be attending this evening. So that has been removed. Um, items for separate discussion are as follows. R dash two, Becaman Awards Summary Report. R dash five additional information memorandum to item CW two one, Committee of the Hall of May ninth, twenty twenty two. Heritage Advisory Committee Summary Report Recommendation Number One. Um, it was requested to be pulled, and there's also a pecuniary interest. Uh, CW one two, Request of Town Owned and Operated Greenhouse. CW five four, twenty twenty two Community Grant Program Request. There was several pecuniary interests declared. CS one verbal report of the C O recalling wood to Alston Pipeline and Supply Water Update. Direction is required of council. And lastly, um, CS three council direction on Committee of Adjustment Appeals for For Fletcher Street, Alston and. Six, two, three, three, fourteenth line new to come. So staff require direction, and there was also a pecuniary interest declared. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So I have a motion for we're going to adopt the items not requiring separate discussion. Be resolved that items on the committee of the whole meeting report dated May nine, two zero two two, including additional information memorandums. With the exception of those items identified for separate discussion be approved, and the recommendations therein be adopted. For the communication items and any other items listed on the council meeting agenda dated May thirtieth, two zero two two. With the exception of those items identified for separate discussion be received and or adopted, moved by Counselor Foster, seconded by Counselor Lacy. All those in favor, please? That's carried. Thank you very much, council. We don't have any deputations requiring statutory or public meetings. I look at the clerk confirmed. Thank you. Our first item, D one, James Stevenson, that has been removed from the agenda. So council, we would go forward then to R two. And that item was pulled by Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Norcross. Uh, through you to Director Glant, just a question related to these thirteen items. The, the Q one twenty twenty two award, I see you have all the numbers listed, but then the purchase order value in one, two, three, four, five. Is significantly higher than the, the actual budgeted award. I'm just looking for clarification why that is.
I'll refer to you. Thank you.
For you, Deputy Mayor Norcross. Uh, to Counselor Foster. In response to your question, the purchase order value, in the case where the value is higher than the Q one award. It means that it was awarded previously and in Q one, there was an amendment to that.
Counselor Foster? Thank you very much. So I have a resolution in front of me. Be resolved, the report number F I N dash two zero two two dash one one. Be received, moved by Counselor Foster, seconded by Counselor Jeb. Thank you very much. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, council. We are now moving on to item R five, which I have a pecuniary interest and according to the procedural bylaw. I will turn the meeting over to the clerk and I believe council shall appoint a chair. So I'll excuse myself now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I'm looking for a nomination from council for a member of council to, uh, chair the next item on the council agenda. If I could have a mover and seconder, um, Counselor Sainsbury.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll move Counselor Jeb. Take the chair for that one item. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a seconder for Counselor Jeb to chair the meeting? Uh, Counselor Foster, all those in favor? And that's carried. The, the chair is now yours, Counselor Jeb.
Donna, we can't hear you.
Do I have to read this all over again, Shira?
Yes, you do.
Sorry about that, Counselor Harrison McIntyre. Uh, be it resolved that report P R C twenty twenty two twelve additional information memorandum to item CW two one. With respect to recommendation one of the Heritage Advisory Committee Summary Report dated April twenty six, twenty twenty two be received. And further that the Heritage Advisory Committee Summary Report dated April twenty six, twenty twenty two be received. And further that staff be directed, proceed with adding the properties located at twelve Mill Street East, Tottenham, twenty five Main Street West, Beaton and one sixty one Center Street North. Beaten to the new to come to registry of significant properties in accordance with requirements of the Ontario Heritage Act. Do I have a mover? Counselor Harrison McIntyre, seconded by Counselor McCollan, discussion. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Jeb. I spoke about this report at the last meeting. And my only, the concern I have with this. Is. Is that when? The Heritage Committee asked to put, have a property put on. The register. They notify the current processes. They would notify. Uh, they come to council, there would be a, a motion made. They would notify the property owner, which would then trigger a thirty day appeal period. And having read the Ontario Heritage Act and a number of things concerning these properties. I, I personally just find it. Even though the, the act says you don't have to notify somebody, why would we want to go down a road? Where you would. Put someone's property on that list. Only to have, to have them put it through the appeal process where they not. To, um, to want to do that or, or start a process. So my simple amendment to this is, I think it's the right thing to do is simply. Change the internal procedure at the town. To notify. Potential people whose properties are going to be on the register list before coming to council. I just think it's a procedural move and I would liken it to negative option billing. I think we all remember. When some of the telecommunications companies gave us channels and then told us it was our responsibility to, uh, call back if you didn't want the service. I just don't believe that's the right way to handle people and I don't think it's the right way to handle property. So I would, I've asked the clerk, I spoke to her this afternoon. I believe she has a motion prepared dealing with, uh, uh, what I'm looking to do.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, thank you, your worship. So the amendment would be as follows. And further that council direct staff to amend its internal procedures to provide notice to the property owner. Prior to the property being considered by council for the new to come, so register of significant properties as defined under the Ontario Heritage Act.
Thank you. This moved by Counselor Foster, seconded by Counselor Noe. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Jeb. I absolutely hear where Counselor Foster is coming from and, um, and I do agree that having, um, feedback from the residents is, is very important. I do want to point out that there is an opportunity for residents to, um, to appeal this. And also to just point out that, um, this is in some way. Precedent setting because this is the way that it's been laid out and if. For example, there was a property that council deemed significant or, um, wanted to designate. The choice comes down to the choice of council to designate it or not designate it. It's. While we want to always have the buy-in from the home, homeowners and to have or from the property owners. There are examples throughout Ontario where properties have been designated without the support of the owners. I'm not suggesting that that's something that we're undertaking right now or will be undertaking in the near future. However, um. The power does lie with council to recognize the value of something beyond just the monetary value for, uh, an individual. That there is cultural value for a town and that the, it's, it's part of a whole, um, community and that. As a council, we have that responsibility to lead and to implement things for the betterment of. Most, and sometimes that's at the, um, expense of an individual. So I would just suggest that the process as it is has worked in the past. If we have people coming forward who are highly objectionable, then it's up to council to. Rethink and perhaps not designate or not put it on the significant list, but that power still lies with council.
Um, thank you. Uh, I'll just. Um, since I made the amendment, if someone else wants to speak first, I'll, I'd just like to speak last to, to a few comments that were made. So if there's anyone else who wants to speak.
Counselor Sainsbury? Uh, yes, I don't think, uh, that it's going to be that complicated. I think if two or three homes in a year or, or there's never very many that are designated anyway. At any given time, it's just a courtesy letter. So they don't just read it in the paper, read it in the minutes on the town website. So I, I don't think that it's sutter's shaking to, to notify the people ahead of time. And then they'll still have to go through the process after that. Counselor Lacy?
Thank you. Yeah, I, uh, I agree with Counselor Sainsbury. It's just a courtesy more so. Um, we're not changing the official procedure where, you know, they can't appeal or that council wouldn't, uh, approve or deny, um, the recommendations from the historical society. But it is a courtesy to the residents of, of, or the owners of the buildings. And it, it might even help because they could go in and, uh, give you a little bit more history to the, uh. For the building and, and help actually push this along a little bit easier. That's my opinion, so.
Counselor McCollan and then back to Counselor Harrison McIntyre.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Jeb. Just clarity on, um, Counselor Foster's motion. So this is just a, a courtesy letter like this. We're not obviously changing the Heritage Act, right? It's not starting the appeal process early. Okay. And I, I think the distinction does need to be made between significant properties and designated properties. Those, those are two, two different things. Designated properties have, um, much more, um, details and. Uh, rules attached to them where a significant property is, it's just about a demolition permit. So. Um, I think we just need to be careful what language we're using when we're talking about it. This in particular, or we're talking about deeming them significant, not designated them. Thanks.
Counselor Harrison McIntyre, then Counselor Sainsbury.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I will say is that these, all the properties that the, um, had already been, this has already been done and I'm actually. Going back on what I said, because we already have contacted homeowners who we wanted to put on significant list. And I think that some of you were at that opening. It was an open house probably five years ago. So it's worth doing again. Because there may be new homeowners, but absolutely we, we can totally send out letters to people in advance and tell them that we're interested in making their houses. Putting their houses, making them significant. And we have done that in the past. Um, we were successful in getting a couple of people to volunteer to have their houses. Deemed significant and we even had one or two who were interested in going through the designation process. So it's, it's not a big, it's not a big ask, Counselor Foster. Um, as I said, we have, as the committee has done that before. So I don't think that. It's something that we. I don't think that. I think what I just want to say is that the committee already does that. So we're happy to do it again for these specific properties, but I want you to know that as part of the way that the committee operates. And with staff, we already do that step. So happy to do it again.
Counselor Sainsbury? Uh, thank you, your worship. I assume it's just, uh, uh, sorry, Counselor Jeb. I, I assume it's just a, a form letter, like the letter would be the same, only the address and the person's name and. Location of the property would change in the letter that we keep the letter the same. Each annual year as we choose to designate these properties. I see Madam Kirk nodding her head. Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Foster?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Jeb. Ju- just to reiterate, sometimes it's, it's a, the simple ask is. Is this is in most cases, and this is not about these three properties or any other previous properties. It's just the way you approach people and to me to designate something and then say, oh, by the way, it's been designated. As much as maybe we all think that everyone. Sits down with bated breath to sit and watch this council and just can't wait to lap up everything that we say. Ninety-nine percent of people don't. So at the end of the day, it's just utterly disrespectful to, to take someone's largest possession. Tell them we're going to make it significant.
Point of order, point of order.
Go ahead.
That is not the process, Counselor Foster, and it clearly states in the, um, in the report that that's not the, the, and they won't find out from not watching YouTube that they are. Absolutely involved in the whole process.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Foster.
We can easily pull up the, the video from the last meeting. There was a conversation and the conversation was, they do not have to be notified and it's part of the act. That's simply all I was stating. So if you do not follow council and you do not. Watch all this, you may never have any idea that your property is being discussed. So the simple fact of the matter is to send it out to people. I think the Heritage Committee does wonderful work and at the end of the day, it's important to preserve the heritage. I'm simply asking for a procedural step. To go in place to notify people that we're considering this. May they all be cooperative. May it all work that way. And that's exactly it. So please don't. Misinterpret my words and the beauty of video is you can go back and watch the Heritage Committee. You can go back and watch the May ninth meeting. And it will, it will all spell itself out as to what was said.
Counselor McCollan and then Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Jeb. I think. What Counselor Harrison McIntyre was trying to say is that nobody finds out from reading the paper. What happens is the Heritage Committee suggests it to council. So it comes to council and then council says, we think that's a good idea and council votes for it. And then a letter is immediately sent to the homeowners that they, they wouldn't get surprised by it. They, they are notified. When, when we're talking about it, maybe they don't realize, but as, uh, Counselor Harrison McIntyre mentioned, that we, the Heritage Committee does. Send out letters and, and tries to drum up support and excitement over heritage buildings and significant buildings and possibly designated buildings. Um, should we keep doing that? Yeah. I mean, why not?
Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
That's fine. Counselor McCollan said it all. It's right there on page, uh, fifty four of the report. There's a flow chart and it shows you how at one point the, um, property owner is notified. So. As Counselor McCollan said, the decision of council, then following that, then the property owner is notified by registered mail.
Counselor Foster?
The current policy is not clear that a council decision is not made before the letter goes out. The motion that the amendment that I have put in ensures that before any decision of committee of the whole or council is made, that the property owner is notified. If someone would like to correct that, I will be happy to stand corrected.
Any further discussion? I will ask the clerk to read the amendment, please.
And further that council direct staff to amend its internal procedures. To provide notice to the property owner prior to the property being considered by council for the new to come, so register. Of significant properties as defined under the Ontario Heritage Act.
Counselor? Counselor McCollan?
I just have a quick procedural question. Um, right now the Heritage Committee is only sitting every, every six weeks. So do we have a timeframe as to? Like, can we send out the letter to the, the homeowner, the day of council? Or what, what's the timeframe here? Because we already have troubles getting things through quick enough because we only sit every six weeks. So I'm just wondering. Um, how this fits in? Like, do we have to give it two weeks? Like, send the letter out, give it two weeks? And then it can come to council. I'm just not, I, just for procedural purposes, I'd like, I'd like to know because it's going to affect the, uh, the work. Or the pace of the work that the Heritage Committee can do. Thank you.
Counselor Foster, did you want to answer or will I just direct it through to staff?
I, I think a recommendation from staff is fine, whatever, whatever the clerk. I, I think a recommendation from staff is fine, whatever, whatever the clerk or whoever is best suited to answer it, I would accept.
I'll, I'll ask the clerk or deputy clerk.
I would, I would recommend thirty days. That's in keeping with a lot of other legislation and notification periods.
Counselor Sainsbury.
Just through you, Counselor Jeb, just wanted clarification. Is this letter coming from the Heritage Committee first? Then when we get all the concerns from the homeowners, whoever they may be, then that comes to committee and then on to council? Where's this? Who's sending the letter? The Heritage Committee? Before we get it? And then once we know all of the concerns a homeowner has, then we can deal with it at committee and if there's no problems, it goes right on to council and gets ratified. Is that what you're looking for on this flow chart that's different?
Sorry, Counselor Foster. Go ahead.
No problem. It, it was just based on the previous discussion. So the Counselor Sainsbury's point is that currently the Heritage Committee could come up with a designation. They could come to council. And in that process, there was a possibility that, that the homeowner or the building owner would, would see hit the notice only after a decision or discussion that happened to council. All I'm simply asking is that whether it comes from, from the clerk's office, whether it comes from the Heritage Committee, that dear homeowner, your property is being considered as for a significant property. And it will become before council in the next thirty days. That's proper notification. Nothing else changes. The appeal period doesn't change, but they've just been given notice prior to discussion at council or committee, the whole. So I, I hope that answers your question.
Oh, Counselor Harrison McIntyre.
I, I just wonder, so they would get the letter, they would then come to council and speak about it? And then council would make a decision and then they would have again thirty days in which to appeal that. Because that's the way, because we're not taking out that part afterwards. There is still that, there'll be two opportunities for them to appeal. The, is, is what you're adding in, right?
Counselor Foster.
Call it a courtesy notification that this is coming. And, you know, nothing else changes. I'm not trying to water down any municipal powers, anything from the Heritage Committee, anything at all. It's just a courtesy notification to say, this is what we'd like to do. Let the process begin.
Okay, so discussion has been made. All voting on the amendment, all in favor. Opposed? One, two, carried. So now the amendment has been passed. So now we are going to vote, sorry, Deputy Mayor. So now we are going to vote on the motion with the amendment. Do I need to read it all out again? I don't think so. So can I have a motion? Moved by Counselor Noi, seconded by Counselor Lacy, all in favor of the amended motion. All opposed.
Sorry, Counselor Jeb, I don't understand what we just voted on and what we're voting on now, then.
The, we voted first on the amendment to include that letter.
Yep.
And that got passed. And now we're voting on the amended motion that was in our agenda with the amendment attached to it. Okay, so will I ask again, all in favor of the amended motion? Opposed. Carried. Thank you. Hey, your worship, you're back in.
Okay, council, moving right along, going to move to item CW one dash two. That was pulled by Counselor Jeb, request for town-owned and operated greenhouse.
Thank you, worship. After discussion with the motion last meeting, I revised the motion and I've sent it to the clerk and I think she's going to put it on the screen, maybe not put it on the screen. And it's just to change the flavor of the motion that we're just asking staff to take a look at this. And if it's feasible, great, we'll put it into the budget for next year's discussion. And let you, and I'll let you read it because I, I have a hard time reading that.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk, please.
Whereas Canada is celebrating a hundred years of horticulture in two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas the town of New Tecumseh currently purchases plants and flowers to beautify downtown cores. And whereas there have been years where slow supply of plants and flowers have been available for municipalities and residents to purchase. And whereas the Alston and Beaton Horticultural Societies volunteer in planting gardens throughout the municipality. And whereas the Alston and Beaton Horticultural Horticultural Societies currently do not have locations to grow their plants. And whereas under the UN Sustainability Development Goal Number Two, Zero Hunger, Goal Number Four, Quality Education, the town of New Tecumseh has the ability to provide programming for students during school breaks on horticulture procedures. And whereas the town of New Tecumseh has an opportunity to build within a reasonable size, a hundred and eighty foot square and operate a greenhouse at the Joint Operations Centre in Beaton, which would assist in reducing costs associated with the purchase and supplies of plants and flowers. Now therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to bring forward to the two thousand and twenty-three budget costs associated with the construction operation of a town-owned and operated greenhouse for consideration. And further that societies, I'm sorry, and further that staff be directed to communicate with the Alston and Beaton Horticultural Societies with regard to potentially having a partnership with both to work in the greenhouse and report back to council during the two thousand and twenty-three budget deliberations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments or questions for members of council in regard to that motion that's on the screen? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So just to get the flavor here, Counselor Jeb, you're suggesting that a report would come back to this council, council would approve it. There'd be a financial number attached to it. And then that would be forwarded to the two thousand and twenty-three deliberations and the council of that day will make the decision as to whether or not they go forward.
I would have it that it would bring it, the, the staff would bring it to the deliberation of the budget. If it's going to be feasible or not, it might not be feasible, but just giving them the opportunity to check it out. And if, if they can put it into their budget for two thousand and twenty-three, then the discussion can happen then.
Okay, that's where I was going with that, that it'll be the next term of council in budget deliberations. We'll make that decision. One thing in that report, if, if it's passed by council, I wouldn't mind seeing is how much does the town of New Tecumseh pay in purchasing plants? And what percentage of purchasing those plants come from our local businesses? So I'd just like to see that. So Counselor McC, did you want to speak to it? Do you want me to put the motion on the floor first? Okay, thank you. So the clerk has read the motion. Counselor Jeb, I assume you will move that, please. Thank you. Do we have a second or please? Counselor Noi, comments or questions in regards to the motion that's on the floor, please? I'm not seeing any. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of that motion, please? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to CW five, please. That's your two thousand and twenty-two Community Grant Program Request. We've had a couple of conflicts called in regards to donations to some of our community groups. So Madam Clerk, I will look to you for the flavor of how you would like to do this. And like, leave like we did the last time is you pulled it and called it. Would you like to follow that same procedure? Or I can do it right here?
It's up to you.
Thank you. I don't have a conflict. So as long as council indulge me. So the first motion and members of council, please. It's up to you to note your conflict. I'll look at you as I read them. Because some of you are involved in more than one organization. So motion number one was be resolved, the deputation of Chris Ross, the Community Rec. Recreation Improvement Committee be received and further the request for a grant of the amount of two thousand to off, off, offset the costs associated with both selling tickets online, broadcasting draw online be approved. Counselor Lacy, you're out. Nobody else has a conflict on that. So that would be moved by Counselor Jeb, seconded by Counselor Foster. All those in favor, please? Thank you. Counselor Lacy, you're back in. The second motion, be resolved, the request by the four H South Simcoe in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars be approved. Counselor Jeb, I believe you have a conflict. You're out. Thank you. I would ask that that be moved by Counselor McCollum, please. Second by Counselor Foster. All those in favor? Thank you very much. We're going to move on to motion number three. Beat resolved with the request by the Alston Potato Festival Committee in the amount of two thousand and ten thousand dollars be approved. Counselor McCollum, you have a conflict. You're out. Thank you. I'd ask by Counselor Lacy, seconded by Counselor Sainsbury. Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion number four, be resolved with the request by the Tottenham Music in the Park, the amount of five thousand dollars be approved. Counselor McCollum's out. Counselor Foster, Counselor Lacy. All those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to motion number five, Counselor McCollum, you're back in. Be resolved that the request for a grant by the Beaton Fall Fair in the amount of two thousand dollars be approved. Counselor Noi. Counselor Jeb, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion number six, be resolved, the report number PRC two zero two two dash zero eight be received and for the two thousand and twenty-two Community Grant Program Quest within the categories of arts, culture and tourism grants, community event grants and community grants be approved as outlined in attachment number one as group A to report number PRC dash two zero two two dash zero eight in accordance with the Community Grant Program Policy. And for the funding for approved event requests shall only be released to organizers once the event is confirmed in writing to be taken place in two thousand and twenty-two to satisfaction of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. And further that the grant request from South Simcoe Youth Reach in the amount of two thousand dollars be approved and funded from the Mayor's Charity Event Reserve. And further, the Community Grant Program be closed for two zero two two. Counselor Harrison McIntyre, I'm sorry, I didn't check my screen. Would you like to move that? Yes, you would. Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. And Counselor Sainsbury, you can second that, please. Thank you. Oh. Counselor McCollum, did you have a card to speak? Thank you. I apologize.
Wanted to clarify on the last motion with the beaten fair. I should have spun my chair around again, but I didn't vote on it. I just didn't.
It'll be duly noted that Counselor McCollum has declared a conflict on that motion, please. I'll look to the clerk to confirm. Counselor McCollum's confirmed. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please? Okay, thank you, council. Okay, council, I'm going to go to the bylaw section. And be resolved that the following bylaws be read a first, second and third time and enacted. Two zero two two dash zero five one, two zero two two dash zero five two, two zero two two dash zero five three, two zero two two dash zero five four, two zero two two dash zero five five, two zero two two dash zero five six, two zero two two dash zero five seven, two zero two two dash zero five eight. Counselor Lacy, would you move that for me? Counselor Foster, would you second that? You're okay with that? Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor, please? And that is carried. Thank you very much, council. General information announcements. Public notice. I'm not seeing any. So council, we're going to move into closed session. So I'm going to need a motion, please. So Counselor Jeb, Counselor Sainsbury, be resolved that council convene into closed meeting at
six fifty-nine, worship.
At six fifty-nine PM to discuss the following items. And just to clarify, please, I would like to outline the items that were pulled for discussion. It was item CS one, ever reported the CAO reference calling with Allison Pipeline and Supply of Water Update. The other issue that was pulled was item CS three, council direction on Committee of Adjustment Appeals Town File A zero one dash two two and B zero one dash two two or Fletcher Street, Alston, OLT number two two dash zero two four three five. Town File A zero three dash two two, six two three three fourteenth line, need to come with OLT dash two two dash zero zero three one eight five. And I'd also like to note before we go into closed session, the Counselor Foster has declared a community interest on CS three. And Counselor Noi.
Thank you, your worship. I'm like full CS two.
No, that's, that's fine. So I'll just.
I think they are, they're looking for direction.
No, they don't. They, there's direction given in the report. If you don't want to change the direction, we could just let it pass. Okay, thank you. So Counselor Foster, you pulled up community interest. And so when that item comes up in closed session, since we're in closed session, I would ask you to leave the meeting. Thank you. All those in favor then of that direction? That's carried. Thank you very much.